April 28th, 2025, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order at 6:00 PM. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteaway.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Protem Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as written.
A second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
All in, or do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements tonight, which brings us to our boards and committees. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the appointment? Commissioner Davis?
I move we appoint Heather Addison to the Peterway Public Library Board for a term ending on May 1st, 2030.
Do we have a second? Protem Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Any discussion?
No, other than I'm really glad that she's willing to put her time into that, that committee.
Yeah, Heather was going to be a great asset there. She's a great person.
All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, Commissioners, do we have a motion on the reappointments? Commissioner Davis?
The only one that wants to try the, the pronunciations. I move that we reappoint Barb Osway to the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending on May 30th, 2028, Gerald Kudrow to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for a term ending May 30th, 2028, and Madeline Arquette to the Marquette Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2028.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Otteaway?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
No, other than I want to thank the three of them for coming back to the committees and, and giving of their time and talent.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the commission. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Margaret Brom, 404 East Magnetic Street. On Saturday, this past Saturday, I attended the wildfire awareness training as presented by Kathy Rupert, including people from Sands Township, Michigan Department Natural Resources, Marquette County Emergency Management, American Red Cross, Northern Lights Veterinary Service, and UPOS. There were representatives from all those organizations, representatives from the community, and representatives from some of the local first responders. I'm coming here tonight to address the commission because I could not locate or identify anyone representing the city of Marquette. And some of the things we learned at this meeting apply directly to the city of Marquette, specifically to the most dangerous wildfire situations we will have. And I'm just making my own statement, this did not come up at the meeting. A wildfire on the island could be a disaster to life, limb, and property. And I challenge the commission and our first responders to work with Ms. Rupert to come up with a emergency plan for evacuating the island in the event of a wildfire there. Number one, in this room, not three years ago, we had a professional forester address the commission. They had done a survey of the island and determined that it is a tinderbox ready to burn. That there's so much loam, which is decayed leaves on the bottom because we had, make a decision not to remove it, that one spark will start that loam, and that there's intermediate sizes of trees, which means the fire will jump from the ground to the intermediate size, get into the canopy. And at that point in time, there will be no way to save the trees. Neither will there be any time. One of the things I learned this weekend is how fast wildfires go. I was sitting in my car, close to the island this afternoon, waiting for the wind to stop because the wind was moving my SUV, hitting it so hard. There is no disaster system in place right now for Marquette County to warn people of wildfires. There is no app, there is no emergency broadcast system, there is nothing. And even if there was, on the far side of the island, if any of you have ever been on your phone, of course, hands-free, safely, driving around the island, engaged in a phone conversation, you know that when you come to the top of the hill and go down to Sunset Point, you lose your signal. So even if there were an app, you would lose your signal. And when you don't have a signal, people don't tend to pay attention to it. And we also have very narrow roads, and until you make a decision to ban large vehicles, we're going to have those roads blocked. Even this Sunday, when I walked with a friend, there had to be over 150 people on the island just walking. So this is a hole in our protection system that needs to be addressed. I will be addressing contact information for Ms. Rupert to the committee and to the first responders, so you can follow up on this. My first suggestion is to get a big siren. If we don't, can't afford one, let's rent one, because maybe people will pay attention to a siren. Thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, public comment is now closed. This brings us to our first, our presentations for tonight. We have three of them. Up first, we have the Upper Peninsula Children's Museum Guardian Recognition of Nora Ryan with Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim, please join us.
Good evening. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. It's been, it's a small thing, us being here to recognize youth volunteers regularly now. And we had a hiatus, and we're back. But it's 25 years of a small thing. So for 25 years, we've managed to come to this room and acknowledge youth volunteers in our community, helping out at the Children's Museum down the road. And I am so proud of that. I'm very proud of Nora. And as we had said to each other, Nora is Saturdays, and Saturdays are Nora time. And this young lady has come to volunteer with us and brings a sense of humor, especially where the care of our animals is concerned, as to how she might deal with them. But she's a very loving young lady who really comes in and takes over the museum. And so I want to recommend her to you as our guardian to be awarded.
So Nora, I have this for you, which is a certificate from the study of Marquette. Thank you very much. I'm also very biased, as we know. Oh, Sean's going to take the picture. We're going to slide this way so we can take it with Mr. Jim as well. Do you want to say anything?
My name is Nora, and I love working at the Children's Museum. I've been doing it from, since about last spring. And I really enjoy that when you're above eight, you get this responsibility to come and help with the other staff members. And you just get a lot of responsibility to actually have a job and work there.
Thank you, Nora. You did such a good job. There you go. Thank you. All right, thank you. Our second presentation of the evening will be from the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee by Nikki Bates.
That's a pretty tough act to follow. Congratulations, Nora. My name is Nikki Bates. I've been a Marquette resident for two years now. I've been on the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee for one. You are probably aware that you have to have lived here for a year, which means I joined the commission the day that I was eligible. In my day job, I work for the League of Michigan Bicycleists. We're a bicycle and pedestrian safety organization based in Lansing. And I like riding bikes and walking and driving around Marquette, so this is sort of a perfect place for me. We meet on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM in Conference Room 103. Something we're very proud of is that at the time of this presentation last year, we had seven, we had four vacancies on the position last year, sorry, four positions vacant last year. And now we have only one. We've worked really hard to find people who come from a variety of backgrounds and have a variety of interests and ways that they get around the city to make sure that we are working, working to make driving as safe as walking, as safe as biking, that we're taking the needs of local businesses into account and things like that. Those are the committee members and our committee liaison, Captain Finkbeiner. I also would like to give a shout out to him. We're very lucky to have him. He has a lot of knowledge of the city of Marquette and is a great liaison between the city and our committee. We are applying for a name change pending city commission approval. We did submit one that was denied a few months ago. We took that feedback and agreed that that was not maybe the best name, but we also don't feel that the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee is the best name for us. So we're in search of a new name. This is the one that we're suggesting for now, the Streets and Sidewalk Safety Advisory Committee. And the mission of our committee is to provide transportation policy and infrastructure recommendations to the city of Marquette, which emphasizes accessibility, safety, and support for local businesses. It's a little bit shorter, we like that. So what we do on our commission is that we receive public comments. Sometimes they're by phone, sometimes they're letters written by 10-year-olds who want to improve their neighborhood stop signs. And from all Marquette residents who have traffic safety concerns, they're all sent through, usually to Captain Finkbeiner and then to us. So we make recommendations to the city based on our shared knowledge. A lot of us have experience in complete streets, which is a way of building streets that are safer for everyone, and our shared knowledge of the city's roadways and how we can make them safer. We really do try to focus on low-cost initiatives. We know that money is not just like pouring out of everywhere. And so a lot of what we recommend, honestly, is painting crosswalks and things like that, which can have a huge effect in just making drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians all pay attention and look around to what's happening, which is the best way to be safe in doing any of those things. We are interested in helping the city with any efforts to improve safety for bicycles, pedestrians, and drivers. I think pretty much everyone is, on our committee, is volunteering to help with the city's bike rodeo that the Planning Commission is putting on next month. We're very excited to be helping with that. So if there's ever anything like that that comes up, please feel free to reach out to Captain Finkbeiner or to us as a committee, and we are interested in helping out. These are the kinds of public comments that are brought to us. Definitely, we get a lot of comments about e-bikes, and I'm sure that that's no surprise. We've taken some steps to combat that, and I'll talk about that in our next slide. We also get a lot of comments about parking issues, either incorrect or missing signage, places where people are blocking intersections or blocking driveways. We want to improve the safety of sidewalk and bike path crossings. We're concerned about speeding. Brake braking is an issue that was brought to our attention, if you're not familiar, which is when a large truck's engine uses compression to aid in the braking, and it makes a sound that sounds an awful lot like a gunshot going off, which is uncomfortable to hear at 5:00 in the morning while you're sleeping. The visibility of stop signs and requests for stop signs to be installed are another issue that is brought to our attention. The e-bike usage and solutions that we have come across, while we don't manage the bike path, that falls under Marquette Parks and Recreation, we have a shared issue here. And so this is something that Captain Finkbeiner has worked really hard with MPD on, to talk about the different classes of e-bikes. Some of them have throttle, some of them are pedal assist, which means you have to be actively moving. Those are class ones, which are allowed on the bike path. In order for it to be allowed on the bike path, you have to be actively pedaling and not using a throttle. So the main concerns are speed and safety, people whizzing around, people who are walking, have kids, have dogs, things like that. The two things that have been done to combat that in the last year, most of this was last fall. It will be stepped up again as the snow has melted now. But every middle schooler who goes to a Marquette public school heard from their school resource officer about e-bike safety, about using speed limits, wearing helmets, paying attention to your surroundings, things like that. We're hoping that by talking to kids, we can kind of get them to understand that there are other people around them, they're operating a dangerous tool, and that they should just be more aware. And also, they have increased the Marquette PD presence on the bike path, stopping people, talking to them about class-two bikes and throttles and how they're not allowed, and talking about riding safely and things like that. So we'll keep addressing those issues as we're able to. These are some of the recommendations that we have made. Like I mentioned, we'll be at the bike rodeo that's happening in May. It'll be right here in the parking lot at City Hall. At Wright Street, there is a crossing that quite a few people have brought to our attention. It's the one that's pretty close to the cemetery that's right there. And I know we've, with the conversations that we have had is about using money from the mine that was given when it was installed to build an island there that would help people cross more safely. That way you can get halfway across and then get halfway across again. We have worked on some issues with South Lake Street. There were some parking issues, the biggest issue being that there were no parking signs at either end of the street, but not anywhere in the middle. And so if you can't see a no parking sign, I don't know how you know not to park there. So we opened up parking on the street. We had this, we recommended having those signs removed because we decided that there isn't a huge, there aren't many days out of the year where the South Beach parking lot is overflowing to the point that there are people parking on the street. We, like I said, we try to recommend low-cost measures. These are a few of the intersections that we've heard complaints about. Probably none of them are a surprise to you if you walk or bike around the city. These are all areas that I've noticed as well. And so these are areas that we've recommended, traffic calming measures like paint and visibility mirrors, just so everybody can see what's going on. And just a quick note about complete streets. We just want to shift the focus to talk about all different kinds of traffic. Marquette, and because my day job is listening to cities talk about bike lanes, I hear all the time that they can't possibly have good bike infrastructure because we live in a place where it snows. And now my comment is, Marquette would like a word, because Marquette does have some really great bike infrastructure. And we get way more snow than any of the cities who are saying this to me. So I think Marquette is doing a fantastic job and heading in the right direction. And I am very proud to live here because of that. I think it's an incredible thing. So Marquette's a super active community, and we want to keep it that way. And we want to make sure that when people are recreating or getting themselves around the city, that they're able to do it in a safe way. So, yeah, these are the things that we, as a committee, want to focus on. And then my last slide, looking to the future. M-553 is a big concern for a lot of us. We hear a lot of complaints about this, specifically about the spot where, right after Division, where it picks up from 45 to 55, you have people crossing there who are using the south trails, who are using the ski hill, who are turning with a giant RV into raging river, and crossing a street with 55 mile an hour traffic and also often much faster traffic barreling at you is a little bit uncomfortable. We don't want there to be any issues or safety concerns when people come here to recreate, whether they're visitors or whether they live here. And so that's something that we're working with, mostly by me annoying MDOT very nicely right now. So that's something that we're looking at. If anyone is interested in helping me do that, please reach out. We know that there is a study being conducted, and we're really looking forward to hearing the results of that from the consulting firm that the city is working with. And we just want to keep hearing people's issues and doing what we can to fix them. And we'll be here to do that. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any comments or questions? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Ms. Bates, thank you very much. You had a wonderful presentation. You hit everything that I would want to see hit, as a biker runner.
Awesome.
Biker.
Yep.
You hit them all. The only one I would throw on there is one I know you can't do anything about is the speed limit coming down US 41 as you enter town.
Yes.
You have the rapid reduction in speed, and nobody ever hits it. But fantastic presentation.
Thank you. That is one that has been brought to our attention also. I know that MPD has put the speed trailer there, but that's, it can't live there all the time. And so that is one that we have looked at also. I don't think we've made a formal recommendation, but I can take that back to the committee to discuss also. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Nikki, I am so glad that you jumped on a committee as soon, as soon as you could. So thank you. Welcome to Marquette and welcome to working with the city.
Thank you.
I get a lot of complaints about Third Street and bikes and the, actually, people don't bike there because of the concern. And I know that I've talked about, obviously, several times about this, and we kind of disagree. But I'm wondering where your conversations with the committee are going with that.
We actually just had a conversation about this at our last commission meeting. We don't have, it's, I think, difficult for us to know what changes we're allowed to enact. In the, in the dream world that we spoke about, it like the ideal planning would be to remove parking on one side and have angled parking on the other, which I know would be, I know that there would be pushback, but doing angled parking would provide just as many or maybe even more spots than having straight parking on either side, and then turning the other side into a narrower space that has a bidirectional bike lane that's protected in some way. So our hope is that that solution, and then you keep it a two-way street down the middle. Our hope is that that solution would make the businesses happy, where there is just as much, if not more, parking, but also providing cyclists with a safe bidirectional bike lane, so that, because I agree, I don't ride down Third Street very often myself.
And we're not interested in moving the bike lane to like Front Street or something like that.
That is also something that, I don't think that we've discussed that. Sorry, my fellow commission member is over here as well. We haven't talked about moving it to Front Street because we get a lot of complaints about Front Street as well. And so I think it would maybe not put, that's something we can definitely consider. I don't, I would have to look at the, like the traffic data on it, but yeah, that's not out of the question.
Well, I'm really glad that your committee is here looking at all of these safety things. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for listening.
And the other Commissioners? Protem Schlegel?
Yeah. Thanks, Nikki.
Yeah.
Good information. I'm glad to hear that you're working with the state as well. My, my brother is involved in something somewhat similar there with the motorcycle industry and Safety Foundation recreational vehicles, all this stuff that encompasses motorized.
Yeah.
With e-bikes now, we had a great conversation last week about the need for the education. And where does that begin and who's responsible for it? I know that there's some materials that are coming down the pipeline that are going to be able to be utilized for every community, basically, you know, hopefully a standard practice. I was really happy to hear that you're doing middle school awareness. That is something that we've had conversations back from my planning commission days on through to, again, last week, where you're just sitting there and you're like, you know, who's, who's responsible for the educational component, the safety? Is it the parents? Is it the retailers? Is it the student, you know, that, that, that needs to go through a course? And, you know, those types of things are yet to be fully realized, I think, with e-bikes. But, you know, just the fact that we're, being proactive is, is very good. And I want to thank the, the board for being as proactive and reactive as they are when it comes to people's comments. I know that I've had a number of them that I've submitted and almost immediate response, whether it's a fix or, you know, at least an explanation. So the, in the advisory capacity, you guys have always been a shining star. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give most of the credit for what you said to Captain Finkbeiner, but thank you, yes.
Nikki, thank you so much for presenting, so well thought out and just informative as, as always with your committee. But just a quick straw poll, on your time on the committee, does it seem like the amount of complaints and questions and concerns brought up about e-bikes has kind of went up, down, or leveled off?
I think up. I think when it goes down, it's because it's January. And I think it will go back up again very shortly here. This is definitely, because I, this is a conversation that is happening across the state also. And Marquette is a, Marquette specifically NTN is a bit of a leader in allowing e-bikes on their mountain bike trails. This is like the conversation that everybody is having. I think other places don't have quite as nice of a bike path as we do, and that's let them push the conversation a little bit farther, like push it off. But it's definitely increasing, and I don't see it decreasing anytime soon. E-bikes are only growing in popularity.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fabulous that you guys are pushing the education aspect of this, especially with the younger people. If you took a poll in our community, I would say a majority of people do not know what a class-one, class-two, class-three e-bike is, and that includes a lot of the kids that are riding them. So that education piece is important.
Yeah, and when it's hard even from an enforcement perspective to, I, I work in this industry, and I can't eyeball a class-one, two, or three unless I can see you using a throttle. Right? It's very difficult to, to figure that out. So we're hoping that education is a good tool. We haven't really talked about this, but I would also love to get local bike shops involved. If you're renting or selling an e-bike, is there additional information you could be giving out to people? That would be another solution too. But thank you. I agree, education is hopefully the key to fixing a lot of that. Yeah.
Anyone else? Commissioner Davis, one more?
Just one other thing I forgot to mention. You talked about doing more painting on crosswalks so that they're more visible. And I would like to encourage the, working with the arts and culture to make those crosswalks visibly more interesting.
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, I would love that. Yes. We want them to be pretty and fun art pieces. And yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
All right, our last presentation of the evening is a very exciting one. The graduation of the second cohort of the Citizens Academy. I would like to welcome Annie to come up and join.
Hello. I am super excited that we are graduating our second cohort of the Citizens Academy tonight. This cohort had 12 total graduating participants. We've got seven of them here tonight. We did a 10-week session of the Citizens Academy. That's two weeks longer than we did in the fall for the first cohort. We added on a session about the library, and we separated the Fire Department and Police Department into their own sessions. Our participants got to tour five facilities around the city and had 10 total presentations from city staff and got to learn just the ins and outs of city operations and ask questions directly to the people involved. And And, you know, one of the great parts about the Citizens Academy is just sort of unveiling the mask and opening up more direct communication and dialogue between the residents of Marquette and the people working for them. So I'm very excited. We've got our seven graduates here tonight. And if anyone else is interested, we do have applications open on our website for the Fall Academy. That will be our third cohort. Don't have dates yet set, but go online, check it out, apply, email me, whatever, if you're interested. I'm really excited to continue working for the city and the residents in continuing the academy going forward. All right, in no particular order, Amelia Sramick.
I'm assuming she's going to want you to stay up here for a group picture, probably?
Yes.
So, yep. All right, Stacy Boyer-Davis. Kristy, Chrissy Bennett. Okay, absolutely. You're totally fine. You're good. And Erin Mahaney. All right, and then I'm assuming you'd like to come up here and take a picture up here?
Yes.
Can we get you in the middle?
Sure.
Can I also just say thank you very much? This has been an awesome experience, so thank you.
Yes, yeah. Allowed?
Absolutely.
Take it back.
All right, commissioners, do we have any comments about the people in the court? Commissioner Davis?
Okay, those of you who are graduated, thank you so much. It's not everybody who's willing to spend 10 weeks and at least probably two hours every night, so it's probably 20 or 30 hours with the city learning about us. And you guys are now our voice in the community. You help other people know what's happening with the city, and I'm very grateful that you took the time to work with us and study with us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, such a cool thing. I will say huge thank you to all of you for participating, also to all the staff that gave up so much of their time to be able to be a part of this. Annie, you as well. And, you know, seeing all of you here tonight, you know, it's just one of those things that, especially after the first cohort, knowing that we're going to have another one, it's awesome to be in a community that we have this much excitement about what's actually going on. Most communities are not that engaged. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends, keep people coming. It's great. It's the best thing for our community, and it keeps us thriving. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'd like to thank you all for being a part of this and doing all that you did. And I really hope that we see some of your names on our upcoming agendas for joining our boards and committees. All right, thank you so much. This brings us to our next item, which is our consent agenda, a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes 7 to 0. This brings us to our new business item, the request to purchase city-owned property, a portion of McClellan Avenue parcel, which is also a roll call vote. City Clerk, can we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette has been approached by the Marquette Golf Club with an offer to purchase a portion of city-owned surplus property, parcel 0515550, to assist with the development of a new clubhouse. This is a large property that includes an old ball field and currently houses the city rubbish drop-off site. However, the club is only interested in obtaining 14 acres west of Pioneer Road, leaving the city service area intact. Per city policy, the city commission may authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations to a final purchase agreement. The club will be responsible for obtaining a survey identifying the exact property lines they are interested in acquiring, an appraisal of this surveyed property to determine the value, and any necessary environmental evaluations of the land. If the commission directs the city manager to enter into negotiations, and if negotiations are successful, a final resolution of sale will be presented for consideration at a future city commission meeting. The Nukemanon Trail Network has also provided a letter of support for this proposed sale. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Authorize the city manager to negotiate the sale of a portion of parcel 0515550 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before we have a motion for this, we're going to do a little more background. I'd like to invite the members of the Marquette Golf Club up here to give us a little presentation
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the Marquette Golf Club, Mayor Hanley, Mayor Protem Schlegel, commissioners, staff, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Marquette Golf Club. We'd like to thank the commissioners and staff for including us on your busy agenda tonight. And we'll probably be boring compared to your presenters. They were all great. So, thank you for that. My name is Ken Rushka, 1680 County Road 492, representing the Marquette Golf Club tonight at 1075 West Grove Street. I have with me Mr. Mark Gilmore, our Marquette Golf Club Director of Operations, and Mr. Craig Moore, our Marquette Golf Club Director of Agronomy. And we may hear from them later. I have just a statement that the board of the Marquette Golf Club wanted me to present for you tonight. You have the letter of intent that the golf club presented to you. You have a brief cover letter from our president, Ms. Michelle Butler. You have the map that we provided, that was provided to us from the city years ago. And then you have the letter of intent from the Nukemanon Trail Network. And we'd like to thank the Nukemanon, the NTN Trail Network for that letter of support. We're very grateful, and we really enjoy supporting them and working with them. The city clerk mentioned we are here to, with a letter of intent, to purchase the property, to build a building. Our letter of intent is to start a process of due diligence, so I don't know if that is to amend the minutes, but our members would need to hear what's going on with the property. So our letter of intent is to purchase the property and do the due diligence and then explore opportunities for potential future amenities. So I don't know if those minutes need to be adjusted. We don't want our members hearing about things before we've talked to them. We did send a letter to our membership, and they know that we're going to be here tonight to deliver the letter of intent, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'll make a brief statement from the board. On behalf of the Marquette Golf Club and its board of directors, we formally express our intent to acquire the approximate 14-acre parcel of land located on Pioneer Road, currently owned by the city of Marquette. The acquisition helps us protect our boundaries and aligns with our long-term vision to enhance recreational opportunities in the community, contribute to economic development, and expand accessible green space for public recreational use. The Marquette Golf Club has a vision for growth and community impact. We're going to celebrate our 100-year anniversary in next year, in 2026, and we invite all you to come and see the history of the club and celebrate with us. Since our establishment in 1926, the Marquette Golf Club has been a staple of Marquette, serving as a premier 36-hole golf facility, major contributor to local tourism, key partner in community initiatives. Our Gray Walls course is ranked among the top 100 nationally in almost every publication. We haven't found many that it's not, so we're very proud of that. And our Gray Walls course is ranked number-two course you can play in Michigan. It's a public course, the number-two course that's accessible to the public, so we're very proud of our public access. Hence, drawing plus, 10,000-plus visitors annually, with over 600 members, hundreds of junior golfers, a strong alliance with local organizations. Our mission's always been to foster public recreation, youth development, economic growth. The purchase of a property is a small yet strategic investment that will yield significant return for both Marquette Golf Club and the city of Marquette. We foresee this land as a foundational launch point for potential future opportunities that will benefit local residents, businesses, and visiting golf enthusiasts. Wrapping up here, the strategic community benefits beyond just purchasing the land, increased tax revenue. The land would get back on the city tax rolls, and Marquette Golf Course would be a part of that. Public recreation access, continued integration of the Marquette Golf Club's land with local trail networks, year-round recreation opportunities promoting health and wellness of the citizens. Very proud of our relationship with the NTN. We have some of their, they tell us some of their very good trails, and we're very proud of that. We're part of their east-west and north-south connections, so we work with them. And purchasing this property, we would view no interruption in their trails, so we're good partners. We really enjoy them. Environmental stewardship, thoughtful land use and conservation initiatives to enhance green space, ecological sustainability is always a priority at the golf club. In conclusion, the golf club has a proven track record of turning underutilized lands into thriving community assets. Our proposal for the Pioneer Road property represents a unique opportunity to build upon our success, create a lasting impact for Marquette. We look forward to continued collaboration with the city officials and the staff and to help bring this vision to life. We welcome the opportunity to present our plan in some detail at the upcoming May 12 commissioners' meeting, and encourage city representatives to visit the facilities firsthand, look at the potential Marquette Golf Club can bring to the community. Thank you on behalf of the board of directors at the golf club, the membership.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time tonight.
All right. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate the sale of a portion of parcel 0515550 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Commissioner Gottlieb, would you like to start discussion?
Yeah.
And would you like me to have them stay up here to answer questions? Okay, perfect.
I didn't, but she does.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, from my reading of what I've seen and from my history as NTN board member for about 17 years, president of NTN for five years, the working relationship between the two groups and the mere fact that I spend probably more time on the trails that surround the golf course than anybody else in the whole world. I think this is a wonderful way to preserve trail connectivity and keep the golf course happy and keep NTN happy. I think this is a good move for the city.
That's high praise. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Okay, I have some questions. You know, what maybe is in your head about what this looks like is probably not what's in my head, and I'm really confused about what it will look like. So I see some great potential. I mean, if the bike trails are right there, I would hope that the facility is also open to bikers who want to stop in. I don't know if that's what you're thinking, but I don't know if this is a small club or if it's a large club that will have weddings and other events. And I'm, as I think about that, I'm mostly concerned about the traffic and what's going to happen, you know, where do people enter this golf course and how much traffic is there going to be? And I see Mark's already nodding. You already answered that question. But, you know, what does that Pioneer Road look like, especially on the days when we are getting rid of all of our dumping stuff, when things are backed up? So, you know, those are the kind of questions that come to my mind.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to list some of that.
Respectfully, we weren't prepared to answer those tonight, perhaps at the next meeting. You know, we were here to present the letter of intent, and that starts the process for the club to do its due diligence and get to that point where we can look to see if this is feasible.
It's hard for me to get past that traffic and road thing before I can make a decision, though.
Understood. I didn't know that I needed a traffic analysis tonight.
Well, I, you know, I guess I'm not looking for a traffic analysis, but is, will people be entering the clubhouse off of Pioneer Road? Maybe that's how I have to start. Or are they only going to be golfing on the?
Yeah, the city clerk mentioned that, you know, again, we're here to try to get an agreement with the city so we can move forward to explore the potential of this.
Hold on one second. Or Sean?
Commissioner Davis, I'm sorry for writing that in the background item. I think the club is trying to figure out what future development plans might be feasible. And as a part of that, they need to take a look at this property, price it out, and see if we can come to a purchase price that would make those development plans feasible in the future. So I indicated to them that, you know, their entire future plans would need to be made available if we got to a second meeting where a purchase agreement was being approved. But my understanding is maybe they weren't at that stage yet.
So it's a real preliminary thing. I guess whenever the question of selling property has come before, we have plans that are a little more fleshed out. So it's just not something I was expecting.
Yeah.
But I see some really nice potential there.
Thank you.
I just have a lot of questions.
Yeah, respectfully, the club realizes that the property is important to our future. We would be landlocked without it, and these things would not come to fruition. But we're not to the point where we know exactly what these things would be, so our members need to know that before I can discuss that in public, so. So this is the first step for us to start the process with you, to have this relationship where we can entertain the idea of acquiring the property.
I guess that would be my concern, is that it's so preliminary, but I'll let it be.
Yes, ma'am.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Larson, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I guess I don't really have a question, but just kind of amongst some of my thoughts for the rest of the commission. Just kind of wondering, you know, I think at the, you know, we've looked at a couple of potential sales of city property recently, and I think Commissioner Otte pointed out that, you know, selling that is, you know, really, it's a decision on a public asset that permanently removes that option from the city, you know, moving forward. So I guess my question is, you know, for the city, should we be thinking about this as what other uses could that piece of property have in the future? I mean, if it's valuable, you know, if it's valuable to, you know, the club, you know, are there other valuable uses that, you know, may not be there, you know, right now, especially in light of when we're considering of, you know, needing of, you know, affordable housing and other things? And I understand this might not be an ideal area right now, but as the city has fewer and fewer parcels to move on, you know, maybe this piece of property becomes more valuable for something that aligns with the city's goals in the future. So just kind of thinking along those lines, you know, does that make sense? And, you know, it's, I think, you know, we have to think about it, you know, from Commissioner Davis's point of view as well, saying, all right, you know, how does this, how does this help the public good? How does this, how does that road, how does the development impact that road? How does the development impact, you know, residents along those lines as well? So that's just a few of my thoughts, you know. Are there other options that we should be exploring along those lines? I certainly understand that private entities are allowed to petition their local unit of government for land sales and other, and other pieces along those lines. So I just think, as a commission, we should be thinking about it, and, you know, maybe there's some other options that are, that are out there that would be valuable in the future.
Commissioner Otte?
Thank you. Thanks for coming here tonight.
Welcome.
I will say that, you know, I looked this over quite a bit. This is definitely an underutilized piece of property. Whether it's you guys asking for permission to move forward on this tonight or eventually us doing something with it, the discussion needs to be had. So I appreciate you being here. I appreciate you looking into it, certainly. But I will echo Commissioner Larson and say that each one of us has a due diligence to the the community to really think about this, because it's not a small piece of property, obviously, that we're giving up, especially in a community that doesn't have much property as it is. So I want each of us to remember that and also analyze, you know, what this means as an underutilized piece of property, because I think there's good and really good stuff with this idea. But there also could be concerns laid out by the public, so we want to make sure that you're aware of that as well. Certainly, when we hear back from you again, I know you're going to have all of the answers, and I certainly know you'll do your due diligence, and we're not holding you to that tonight. But I would certainly ask staff to maybe, you know, kind of get us as much info on that piece of property as we can get moving forward as we discuss this, just so everyone that's sitting here has a good understanding of what that piece of property actually is and has an understanding of what it could become and why it hasn't became certain things. Because I think there are challenges with that piece of property, and I think we all know that. And I think that that's something that, you know, has to be a part of the conversation as well. So, sorry to ramble on. Oh, Sean, you can go ahead.
Yeah, just to kind of address some of these concerns, I think, we have a map of this parcel that the city clerk can pull up, but it's on our active municipal property list. You know, we have that municipal property inventory book that separates things out a little bit, but it's on the active property because the parcel is so large. So all three of the colors on the screen you're seeing here are the same parcel ID. The golf course is looking at the blue out of all of this. So with this, we're not particularly using the blue. It's not an active piece of this parcel, while the whole parcel is considered active. Additionally, this whole property does have a couple of use restrictions and some other concerns because it's a former landfill site. One thing that we would, I think, ask the golf course to do, or that they're interested in doing, is some of that preliminary environmental study to see exactly what's present on the site and what's visible. It hasn't been on our list of usable property for residential development or something else like that, just because we haven't wanted to look at those concerns.
Question for staff, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will any type of boring need to be done prior to a sale legally?
So I think that's one of the reasons why we're here, asking for approval to move forward. That gives them the, so like I said, this is one big parcel. They're going to need to do a survey to determine the actual boundaries of what they're interested in purchasing. They're going to need to do an appraisal so that we have a basis to negotiate off of. And then if they do the environmental work, that may be a portion of it, but having the commission give the approval for at least the preliminary, you know, discussion for the sale is what I think gives us the ability to allow them to go on that property and conduct that work.
So we understand.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken, for the great information, and I appreciate all three of you being here tonight.
You're welcome.
I guess, you know, we've got to remember that this is a process, and this is so early on that we just have to allow the process to begin before we start asking for specifics. Again, to reiterate the importance of working with your neighbors and keeping that going with the NTN, it's awesome. The fact that it was a former landfill site is, I can't think of a better reuse for this other than a dog park, but I'm not going there. So there's a lot to be, there's a lot to be said for ideal reuse, to get something back on the tax rolls in a way that's going to benefit our community, the region, and our general fund. So I think to allow this to move forward in the process is the perfect next step, and then, you know, the site plan review and all these other things will happen once you guys let your members know what's going on and they agree with it. It's a process, right? It's going to take a long, a lot more time than what some other ones are dealing with because you've got a lot of people in the mix here. So your boards got their work cut out for them. I've been a part of the golf course at one point in time. I haven't for a while because kids and money, but the fact is, is that you guys have made amazing improvements out there to the existing property, to everything except for the clubhouse, if I can be so honest. It's very retro cool, and I haven't been in there in a couple of years. So I did do an energy walkthrough, and I was, I can't wait for you to have something more energy efficient, let me put it that way. But my point is, is that I think that this has been on your radar as a group for quite a while, and to think that it's even possible in today's economic situation and, you know, everything else that's going against expansion in this area, it's really a compliment to where you guys have come from and continue to go. So applaud you in that respect. I think that's pretty much all I have, other than the fact that I think that this is the right time to move forward with this process. Thank you.
Okay. It's okay. I can go afterwards.
You know, I hate to be, you know, to just go on with this issue. I think that this is a great place for the golf course. Second to Commissioner Gottlieb, I'm probably the commissioner who spends a lot of time in that area. It's my walking and running area, so I'm very familiar with it, and I can see it being part of the golf course. And so I don't want you to think that I'm not in favor of this. I'm just hesitant because I feel like I don't have a lot of information about what it will become. And as I look at the resolution, we are directing the city manager to, we are authorizing the city manager to direct the sale. We're not saying this is a preliminary thing. So I guess, Commissioners, that was just my kind of hesitancy. I can get over that.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, and with all due respect, I'm sorry I didn't have the answer to your question, but I told you I would be boring tonight, I'm not as exciting as the other presenters.
Okay. Do you mind if I say one thing first? Okay. I know that we've heard a lot about Commissioner Larson talking about best use of the property and whether or not this is something we should look at with other people or other things. I like to look at it as this is right next to your land that you already own, and it's something that you want to do to hopefully build upon what you have at your course currently. Without this property, could you build upon or do any of the plans that you may or may not have in the future if you do not have this specific parcel?
No, ma'am. We would be landlocked, and we would be committed to our current facilities and amenities for the public forever and ever, so.
Okay. And would this stop you from being able to put in any money into other expansions and things that you had planned or had hoped to have planned? If you didn't have, so you're saying this property doesn't happen, anything that you had planned to do or hoped to do with your big dreams of building maybe another facility or building other additions would be not able to happen, correct?
We'd be landlocked, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's one way that I like to look at this and see is, is this something that could actually benefit our tax base? Is this something that could increase something while still helping along those lands? So that's kind of where I'm looking at this. I know that we do not have the plan in front of us to look at yet, and we will at some point, hopefully. This parcel specifically, not the rest of your plan, what was your plan to do with this parcel? Do you happen to know that? Can you share with us?
I wasn't prepared to share that tonight. You know, we presented the letter of intent, the cover letter, the map, the letter from the NTN. The board authorized me to make the statement I made, so.
Okay. I was just, from staff's perspective, I was just worried if there, if we are worried about environmental concerns on this, is this something that would need to be, like, is it something that could, is that one of the things we have to look into? Is this something that could be built on if that's what they're looking to do? Or is this something that could be an issue going forward?
There are limited uses for this parcel because of the current condition of it and what it had been used previously. Now, I will also say this, that I do believe their land is currently, the land that they are, they currently own, is zoned as conservation/recreation, which has limited use or limited development on there, and that would, I would assume, would be similar to what you would see on this parcel as well, once it is rezoned. But there is some environmental work that would probably need to be done as well.
Okay.
Which is more work and more money, essentially, for those interested.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Larson, did you have more comments?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to moving forward, you know, with it. I just think it's critical that we know that it aligns with future city, future city goals and understanding what those might look like, and to think of, you know, places for things that the city would like, like a dog park, you know, does that make sense? Does that not make sense? So that's really where I'm coming from on those. And I think, you know, to Commissioner Davis's point that, you know, authorizing this is, I mean, it does send a strong signal of intent, the way it is, the way it is written, and it doesn't seem like it'll come back where you can say, all right, well, maybe Pioneer, it doesn't fit Pioneer Road, you know, correctly. You know, you're going to put a lot of dollars towards, you know, potentially figuring out what that, the land value is, what the, what kind of environmental remediation might need to have, and then it's going to come back to us for whether or not we want to make that sale, and if we have more understanding of what your plans are at that point in time, and the commission isn't overly enthusiastic about it, there's a lot of work that goes into it before that. So, you know, I would concur with Commissioner Davis, and it'd be nice to have a little bit more information on what was happening there prior to, you know, moving forward with the sale.
All right. I'll go, Commissioner, yep, Cody first, and then.
Yeah, you know, I think the thought I'm having is kind of related to what Commissioner Larson was just saying, that it feels maybe a little bit like this is a little premature as far as bringing this to the city, given the fact that you can't share details with us yet due to needing to discuss it with the membership. I'm thinking maybe should have discussed it with the membership before we got to this. In the thought process here is, and I really don't have an issue with us moving forward with this, but, I mean, if you're going to put in the time and energy and money to get us to the next step where we potentially could be voting on something in the future here, as well as the staff time on our side as well, if we're all have a lot of concerns about it, I mean, that's a waste of time and resources on both ends, really. Really, I think, the struggle that I've been trying to rack my brain around, and I think it's a little bit of the lack of information right now, but it's just a thought I was having, and, you know, it maybe was a little early coming to the city commission with this, but, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Otteaway?
Thank you. Wow, going round and round. I will say, I support moving forward with this today. I think it is the, they're coming with us with the best of intentions, and ultimately, the people that are making the offer and the ask here are the ones that have to live with the decision that we do or do not make. So ultimately, you know, I will echo the other commissioners, I wish we had a little bit more information. Typically, we do have more information when it comes to that. That's a risk you guys are taking, and I understand that because you also have, you know, members that you have to suffice with. So it's just a part of it, from my understanding, and I understand that, and I just hope that, you know, as we try to negotiate terms, we're doing so in full faith from our side of things. We want you to understand that, you know, without having all of the facts, we can't, you know, be sure that this is good for the city at this point, and, you know, you guys may get into this, spend money, and find out that we're not interested, and we just want to make sure that you understand that. So that's kind of where we're at.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting. I support yes today.
Any other comments before we went into a vote? All right. All in favor, please say yes. Oh, wait, it's a roll call vote. Kyle? Got it. I caught it.
Close. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteaway?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
All right. This brings us to our next public, I mean, our last public comment session of the evening. Once again, public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address if you have not already done so. Do we have anyone for public comment? Oh, yes, please.
All right. So that reaction makes me think that I am, in fact, a genius. But I'm Jackie Stark, 926 Wilson Street. This is Silas Whitney, and I was trying to figure out what to get my husband, City Clerk Kyle Whitney, for his birthday this year, which happens to fall on April 28th. And this was the best I could come up with, so just wanted to make sure that you could note in the minutes, City Clerk, that Jackie Stark and Silas Whitney were here to wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dad.
There we go.
Silas, you have time to sing, if you would like to sing.
No, we're good.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? All right. Public comment is now closed with my, I think that's my favorite public comment we've had, I mean, almost ever. That brings us to comments from the commission. Why don't we start with you today, Protem Schlegel?
Two meetings in a row?
Hey, it's more fun this way.
I wish Mr. Jim was here with Nora again, because he said small things when he referenced some of the, some of the ideas of what's going on with those young volunteers, and those are such great, big, giant things. And I think back to the small activities that I got involved in that helped me grow in my decision to follow my path, and I'm sure that what the Children's Museum does for those young volunteers is something that is definitely going to fashion them and lead them in a direction that's better than others that don't get involved in such great events. So I was really, I was wishing that they were here to hear that. Make sure you pass that on to Mr. Jim.
One last thing.
Yeah. Other than that, I just want to bring up that we have two proclamations in our consent agenda. One was for frontline worker appreciation month, very important topic, very important group of our community that has been on the front line for the last several years, and I just think that it's really important that we recognize that proclamation that was done. I hope that you can go in and read it. I would have much rather had both of these read here tonight, but I understand the process that we go through as far as our commission goes. The other one is the proclamation for National Small Business Week and the impact that small business has in communities. Incredibly important in today's economy is that we recognize small business and make sure that with everything on that's going on and polity in the nation, that we make sure that we put small business at the forefront of our decision-making process if at all possible. And those were two very important of many things that are often kind of buried in our consent agenda, but I just think that those are really important topics that need to be held on the pedestal this week. So other than that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy birthday, Kyle. I think I just have one thing that's not necessarily city-related, but I think it's just kind of a cool thing I wanted to share. A couple days ago, I got to participate in an events kind of ceremony at NMU in the Superior Dome. For those of you that are familiar, you know, with, whether it's for hockey or in the dome, it's normal for NMU to display the flags of, you know, different nations that some students or athletes might be from, and they now included in time for graduation, they added the Sioux Tribes flag as well as KBIC's flag that's going to be hanging there, and they plan on adding the other three tribes from UPAs as well. So, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, great discussion tonight, everyone. Really great group. I really, I think we need to sit here and continue to have conversations like we had tonight and, you know, analyze each other's thoughts as much as we can. I think we tend to do that somewhat well, and, you know, it's collectively how you govern a city, and I think it's important to make mention of that every once in a while. I wanted to also point on National Small Business Week, especially from a local standpoint. You know, right now, in a lull for small businesses, especially our local restaurants, shops, they get a lot of winter business, and then they get a lot of, you know, summer tourism business, and we're in that in-between stage right now where they rely heavily on people that actually live in the communities that they service. So if you get a chance to go out and, you know, have a cup of coffee, buy a sandwich, you know, buy a local T-shirt, do that. It really helps those people, and have conversations with them, because they'll tell you some great stories. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes. I don't know if anyone else noticed, but during the Pledge of Allegiance, there were some small, very, very young voices that were very good, and it was such a, it was a pleasure to hear, and I didn't quite know how old that little voice was. I didn't want to turn because I thought I wasn't supposed to be looking at the flag, but it was really fun to hear.
Nora's little brother?
Nora's little brother, who is?
I'm four.
Five percent, okay. Well, he knew the Pledge of Allegiance, and it was really good to hear. My other thing is that it was really good to hear from the Traffic and Advisory, Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee. I think they play a really essential role and probably are dealing with some of the largest number of complaints we get during the summer with. largest number of complaints we get during the summer with biking and safety. I also am really pleased that the city is choosing to continue the Citizens Academy. I think it's just a really wonderful thing, and Karen and Annie and Sean, thank you so much for just continuing that. I just am really, kind of, just does my heart good. As I was thinking about the golf course, and then I thought about our most recent approach that we were approached to purchase Lakeview Arena, and when we heard from that group, we heard of their vision, and I had an idea, and I could envision what they wanted to do. Tonight, I couldn't hear that. I didn't know what the vision is. I don't know if a clubhouse is like 10 by 12, or if it's a big event thing, or, and so it was, and I think that you've heard that from us, we just need more information. And so that's why I was just a little bit uncomfortable with the way the resolution was worded. But we will have good faith, because you're good neighbors, and I think it'd be a great thing to have something there, I just don't know what it is. So that's it.
Commissioner Otteaway?
I don't know if this information would come to the city commission any other way except for my Lake Street resident. The Lake Street Line Burial Project, to take down the phone, the telephone poles and the lines, which you guys approved, partly had partial approval when you authorized undergrounding the city water line, is going full strength. With any luck, the lines will be down at the end of this fall. It's all going to be dependent on the new power line that BLP is going to put up on US 41, but I've heard a lot of great things from the residents on Lake Street, and I know they are very thankful for the city commissions going ahead and approving the burial of the lines. I'll send you a picture as soon as the lines come down.
Can you have a before now?
Oh, I can give you lots of befores.
Commissioner Larson?
I don't think I have anything today.
All right. And the only thing that I want to do for my commission comment is for having all of us sing to our wonderful...
On his birthday?
So...
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
All right. With that, I will pass on to comments from the city managers.
The loop is opening on May 2nd, but that's it. I'm not, no, I don't want to do, nope. Happy birthday, Kyle.
All right. With that, we are adjourned, and that's 7:08 PM.